You are watching XS La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is January 8th, 2024 meeting of the La Porte County Council Reorganization Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Happy New Year and welcome to the reorganizational meeting of the La Porte County Council. I'm Auditor Tim Stavos, have very specified duties, and I'll return to my, my station on the side. Let's begin this by calling the meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself.
The Pledge of Allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Deputy, call the roll, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
And I'm not even near it.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Karaka.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Thank you.
As this is the reorganizational meeting of the council, we will now seek to have the council appoint its president for the year 2024. Are there nominations for President of the La Porte County Council?
What else to make the nomination for Randy Novak for president?
Mike. Oh, she said Mike.
Make the nomination for Randy Novak for president.
Second.
We have a nomination for Randy Novak for president. Nominations are still open. Are there any other nominations for president? Are there any other nominations for president? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, I guess the formalities that we still have a vote, even though there's only one, Mr. Attorney, or no?
Uh, yes, please. And if you would do it by roll, just so it's clear.
Is there a motion to appoint Randy Novak as President of the La Porte County Council?
I'll make the.
Just call the roll, that's it?
Yeah, just call the roll.
Just call the roll. Okay. Uh, madam, Chief Deputy, if you call the roll, please.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilman Karaka.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Yagelski.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Thank you.
I will let Mr. Novak determine who the Vice President is. All right, the next item on the agenda would be nominations for Vice President.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Adam Karaka.
I'll second that motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Mr. Rosenbaum, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Roll call. Councilman Yagelski.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Karaka.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
And Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Seven ayes. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is approval of the January 8th, 2024. I think there's a couple of minor additions.
Mr. President, if I might, um, on new business, uh, number two, the planning of the year 2024, we have a list, and it's not listed here, but on May 27th, which is a Monday, Memorial Day, we'd like to move that meeting to the 28th, the Tuesday, therefore, give enough time for appropriations and not try and squeeze it a week earlier. And then on September 23rd, it happens to fall at the same time as the AIC conference, we'd like to move that to September 30th. Moving down to number four, we need to add the letter F for the NIRPC appointment. Then we also like to add a number eight, 1782 Notice Discussion. And actually, it'll, I'll just, just put 1782 Notice, it'll be discussion and a motion.
Any other additions or corrections?
Second.
There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open.
Happy New Year, everyone. Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. I'm here, um, you guys are about to do, uh, point people to boards, and I'm here to talk about the P O R Board. Um, I'm having a hard time, um, matter of fact, I had to step down as, um, my position at the Martin Luther King Center because of conflict between myself and Mike Schultz. Our agency has been given a hard time because of who I decided to run against. And I'm 100% believe in due process. In America, that's what we, that's all we have left is due process. Uh, we have not received a denial letter from the Assessor Office, but we are in front of the board as, no matter what, we are in front of the board first. If the Assessor has control over the board, what is the purpose of even having a board? These boards should be independent. The Assessor should not weaponize his elected position to retaliate against people we don't like. Shouldn't be no special favors given. We all held our hand in the air and took the oath, and some of us are violating the oath, and some of us just don't care about the oath we took. I'm trying to stay cordial as possible and with the quorum, but when you go get to see here, um, paragraph 3, uh, C, P O R Board, please make sure you put people on the board that's independent from Mr. Schultz. You cannot, you cannot be the judge, the jury, and the executioner. It's wrong. If he deny us, or if he deny me, I should have the right to go to a board that's independent from Mr. Schultz. His job on the board, as I looked in it, in the statements and bylaws, he's just the secretary, but he's controlling the board as well. And if I'm wrong, I'll be the first one to apologize, but it's obvious I'm not wrong. So I would greatly appreciate it if you give us all in La Porte County a peace of mind and make sure that you put independent people on these boards, people that will think for themselves and not just shake their head because somebody asked them to. Next on the, um, next, I want to just briefly talk about the closing of the Coast Guard Station. Um, it seem like it's going to happen no matter what. Uh, I said this to Mr. Novak, maybe you guys, this is a prime, um, time for us to maybe take over the Coast Guard Station, bring in some, bring in some firefighters and let them work it, because there's no way we can leave that beach unmanned. Dwayne Perry tried it, it was a disaster. We lost a lot of people. Lose one life is enough. Three, four, five, that, that, under Perry term, we can't have that again. So we need to really think about this. If they don't want to man it, or they don't want to put the finances in it, we got to come up with other solutions. It's enough of us up here, there's a lot of us in this room that's smart, we can get it done. We can't keep begging the government to do something that we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else from the public like to speak? Anybody else? Public comment is now closed. Department heads, any department heads that?
I didn't realize we were going to start the year off with personal attacks at the boards, but I'm going to deny what he had said. The reason the, the board hasn't issued a, an approval or a denial is because they've changed attorneys two or three times. So we're waiting for the attorneys to come, and it's been moved to February because their attorney now has asked for a continuance, so we granted it. We've granted all their continuances. So there's a lot of things we haven't gotten from the MLK Center, so we have not denied, nor have we approved their exemption. You do get to approve to the State Indiana Board of Tax Review in Indianapolis. I am not the final say, and it doesn't matter who's on the board, I don't control the board. So they may think I control the board because we, we don't fight, we don't carry on, we don't name call, you know, it's a very even keeled board. They are all qualified to sit on that board, so I deny what Mr., um...
Quorum.
Has accused me of, because I guess unless, if it's, something's not running smooth, there's a problem. I guess we like to see jumping up and name calling and throwing fits and all this. It doesn't happen at Pita Boa. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Department heads are closed. Next item is ordinances and resolutions. First item is resolution number 2024-01.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to read by title only.
Second. By Mr. Yagelski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum to read by title only.
I have a suggestion that you actually read this into the record?
That would be great.
Would that be okay with you all?
Read it.
Well, I'll, I'll read it, or whoever.
Mr. President, make motion to read, resolution number 2024-01.
Then I'll second that corrected motion, adjusted.
So the motion's been amended to?
Go ahead, please read.
Yes. Yeah. All right. This is, uh, La Porte County Resolution Number 2024-01, titled, "Opposing the Reduction in Staffing at the Coast Guard Station in Michigan City and Making Said Station a Part-Time Station." Whereas, the Coast Guard Station in Michigan City, here and after referred to as CGS Michigan City, has been in operation since, since 1888, and is located at the mouth of Trail Creek at 10 on the Lake, Michigan City, Indiana. And whereas, the CSG Michigan City missions include search and rescue, law enforcement, homeland security, marine environmental protection, and training and rescue operations on the ice in the winter months. And whereas, due to workforce shortfalls, La Porte County has learned that the CSG Michigan City is planning to become a part-time facility, with the exception of weekends, before the next boating season due to the reduction in staffing. And whereas, as a matter of health and safety, and to protect the residents and visitors of La Porte County, the County Council reasonably believes that the CSG Michigan City location should not become a part-time facility. And whereas, the La Porte County Council believes it would be prudent to keep this station staffed full-time year-round because of its critical positioning on Lake Michigan and the considerable distance to other Coast Guard stations in Chicago, Illinois, and St. Joseph, Michigan. And whereas, the La Porte County Council urges the Coast Guard to reconsider its position with the CSG Michigan City location and keep this location as a full-time facility at all times. Now therefore, be it resolved by the La Porte County Council as follows. One, the aforementioned whereas sections are incorporated herein, as if fully set forth herein. Two, La Porte County Council opposes the reduction in staffing at the CGS Michigan City and the Coast Guard's intention to make the CGS Michigan City a part-time facility. La Porte County Council reasonably believes that making the station a part-time facility may have an adverse impact on the health and safety of La Porte County residents and visitors. Three, La Porte County Council requests that CGS Michigan City remain a full-time station. And four, the auditor is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to a number of different entities with the Council like to read each entity, a number of different governmental entities to forward the resolution to the governmental entities. End of resolution. Thank you.
Correct.
It's your pleasure.
Um, I'd like to add one adjustment to the resolution, and noting, um, in number four, where there's a list of who to forward this to, we seem to be missing U.S. Representative Rudy Yakum, so if we could just add that on.
It's not on this.
It's not on the one that's in front of me, so if it's on the one that's in front of you, that's great, we're just going to make sure. Sorry about that.
There was another one with, with a representative.
Just, just spotted it, wanted to make sure we get that added. Thank you, sir.
President. Mr. Yagelski.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Um, the Coast Guard Station, in paragraph two, the initial skip flipped, it says CSG instead of CGS, and there's like five of those in a row.
I must be dyslexic.
Okay, well, it's corrected later on in the same page, it goes back to Coast Guard Station, so we just need to make sure that we correct all those.
I will take care of that. That's a little dyslexia, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just to make sure everybody's reading it. Mr. President.
Mr. Yagelski. Being that the, even though it's slightly out of the district, I meant slightly out of by a couple blocks, I'd like to add, uh, J.K., Congressman Rudy Ackman?
Yakum.
Yeah, Yakum, I'm sorry. Uh, because they've always had the same concern about what we're doing, so he just added it a minute ago. Well, I don't know. Okay.
We're good. I'm glad we're thinking of life.
We are.
Yeah.
And if, and here's the thing, if, if anybody thinks of any other names that need to be on there, let us know, so.
So we need a motion to adopt the resolution, to his point? Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second. By Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Karaka.
Sure any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Who's the President? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Should we just take one of these sheets and pass, or do you have a specific one? Thank you.
Appointment of legal counsel.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Guy V. Martino as our legal counsel for another year.
Second. Yeah, a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Karaka. Retain Mr. V. Martino. Any other questions? Any other nominations? Any other thoughts?
Thoughts? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would like to thank you for a job well done.
Even with dyslexia?
Minor typing here.
I, I'd also like to make a comment, I, the contract that we've received is at the same, the same amount as it was for last year, so there's no increases, and so, um, it's the typical 175 an hour and the same, uh, same annual fee as a council member.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Uh, next item is planning the year 2024, regular meetings. As, um, Councilman Rosenbaum had mentioned, um, the schedule that was handed out, looking at changing two dates on there, um, be May, May 28th, I got it right here.
Okay, good.
May 28th and September 30th. Is everybody?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Council appointments of citizen board members. First one up is the La Porte County Public Library Board Trustees.
President, um, a year ago I moved that we put Dara Jeffries, um, young educator in St. Joe County who lives in La Porte County. She's been highly spoken of by the Director and President, and I moved that we reappoint Dara Jeffries.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one is the Alcohol Beverage Commission. And just for clarification, um, the auditor sent out a list of the Michigan City Mayor, the La Porte Mayor, and the Commissioners' appointments, so we're good to?
Take care of it.
Make our appointment now.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for Matt Sikorsky to remain.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Pita Boa, two appointments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Mr. President.
Carry on.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Erica Miller as one of them.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer, is there a second for Erica Miller?
Rosenbaum.
What did I say?
Mullenauer.
The other, the other.
And I'll second.
Second by Mr. Karaka.
Mr. President? Yes, I'd make a motion for Robert Bailey, like, the first time I called him George Bailey, so. I'll start the ongoing joke all these years later.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Just throw you that.
I would like to nominate Ken Purz.
I'll second that. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Keel for Ken Purz. Any other nominations? For the record, I called you George Bailey too today, so. Somebody, it's that season, it's this season. Is there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karaka, seconded by Mr.?
Rosenbaum.
Rosenbaum. All right, so, we've got two different ways, uh, to take these. We can do a roll call and call, do a roll call and a person says a name, and we'll take them one at a time, or do you want to? How do you want to do it?
We'll call the majority of the votes, and if we have a tie, we can go from that point.
Do them.
Just roll call, just roll call, and there's three people.
The highest ones wins, yeah. Okay, we got to have two, but, no, we got to, no.
If you beat the highest one, when it has to still have four votes.
Second, first and second.
So each person is going to say the two names of the people they want?
Win with three votes.
So is each person going to say two names?
Or are we just going to do, we're going to do two names, or we're going to do one name, the next name, and the next name?
Well, you're not going to do two names. Either you're going to do, either you're going to do the first person who was called, Erica Miller, and go, and go through, and if she, and if she, it's a majority, then she's on, and then you go to the next one in line. Okay.
Okay. All right.
Is that what you're doing?
So Erica Miller, so we just do, we do a, all those in favor?
No, you're going to have to do a roll call.
Okay. Roll call it.
Because if, if somebody else, if somebody else wants to vote for Mr. Purz, he's not going to vote for she.
But there's two appointments, though.
Right. Right, but how, however, go ahead, Mr.
Would it not be better to just do a roll call vote where each person states their two picks and then determine which one?
That, that's another way to do it. There's two ways that it could be done.
That's what I was going with.
I prefer that as well.
That works also.
That was, that was my idea, but it's okay.
But if they, if somebody doesn't, they have to have four votes, so have, break the tie if they have three-three.
Correct.
Got you, I understand. Thank you.
Yep, either way.
I think the second way is far better, Mr. President.
Okay, so we'll do.
All right, so, roll call, and you're going to give two names of the three people that were nominated. Councilman Rosenbaum.
Erica Miller, Bob Bailey.
Councilman Novak. Erica Miller and Ken Purz. Councilman Cunningham.
Erica Miller and Ken Purz.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Erica Miller and Bob, Robert Bailey.
Councilman Yagelski.
Erica Miller and Bob Bailey.
Councilman Keel.
Ken Purz and Rob Bailey.
And Councilman Karaka.
Ken Purz, Erica Miller.
We have six votes for Miller.
Two ties for Bailey and Kurt.
We have four votes for Bailey and four votes for Purz, is that possible? I think that is possible.
Yes, it is.
You're going to have to tie. So we got a runoff for Purz. Correct. For Bailey. And Bailey. Sorry, George. And obviously, Mr. Attorney, they can only vote for either of those two, right?
Correct. Nominations were closed.
Are we ready for the roll, sir? Roll it. Councilman Cunningham.
Purz.
Councilman Karaka.
Purz.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Mr. Bailey.
Councilman Keel.
Purz.
Councilman Yagelski.
Mr. Bailey.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Bob Bailey.
And Councilman Novak. They're both here tonight. I know, yeah. Yeah.
You want to be the President.
I know, but I, I know. Um... Bob Bailey. Four Bailey, three Purz. Next item on the agenda is Regional Sewer and Water District.
President, I'd like to make a motion for John Carr.
Second.
Motion and a second for John Carr. Is there any other nominations?
Motion to close?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion for John Carr. All those in favor of John Carr, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the County Health Board.
Mr. President, although she is not the incumbent from our appointment, Lauren Arnold has served for seven years on the County Health Board as an appointment from the Commissioners. Because of the law change, she was not reappointed as they sent those, uh, sent us a vote. I would move, she has a strong recommendation from the head of the Health Department and the President of the Board, I would move that we reappoint Lauren Arnold.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum for Lauren Arnold. Are there any other nominations?
Before we close the nominations, I just want to say that we did receive a large number of people wanting to go on this board, and many qualified people for this board.
We received it, an incredible amount of?
Overall.
People that are interested in the boards all over. I think it's the largest number we've received to date, so.
I would agree with that, and I think that's, uh, very positive for county government.
So I make a motion to close?
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum to close, second, seconded by Mr. Karaka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, all those in favor of Mrs. Arnold, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
Six to one.
Yep.
And if I may, I would just encourage applicants who, who submitted for this, uh, this round of appointments to consider applying in the future, too, not to be dissuaded if they didn't get something this time.
They can put their, they can also put in applications online so that the application is in, um, so that they're on file, if there becomes a vacancy or something, so, I appreciate that.
And we encourage them to attend those meetings.
Right.
So they'll fit right in.
Next item on the agenda is Council Council Appointments of Members to Boards and Commissions. First one is the Animal Control Board that I sit on, I'd like to stay on that.
Mr. President, I'd like to reappoint you to the Animal Control Board.
Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Yagelski. Are there any other people that would like to do that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one is FMEC, currently it's myself and Mr. Rosenbaum.
I know, I'd like to retain the spot. We're getting into the planning phase of a, uh, possible larger projects in a couple of years down the road.
We're working on a comprehensive plan.
So it's, uh, important to have two council members who may need to fund something directly involved.
Make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Councilman Novak and Councilman Rosenbaum.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Karaka. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the Planning Commission. This is Earl, you're sitting on there right now?
Correct.
Would you like to stay on there?
I would prefer to stay on.
Then I'll make. Projects in the future. And I'll make the motion for, uh, Mr. Cunningham to stay on the Planning Commission.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Karaka and, uh, Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Redevelopment Commission. Currently, it's myself, Mr. Rosenbaum, and Mr. Keel.
Mr. President, I move that we appoint Councilman Karaka, Councilman Rosenbaum, and Councilman Novak.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Yagelski for Novak, Karaka, and Rosenbaum. Is there anybody else? Hearing none?
I'd nominate myself to, uh, RDC.
And Justin. Do we go?
You have to do just the roll, same kind.
Do we need a second?
Yes, you do. You don't, yes, you do.
For a nomination?
Yes, you do. No, under Roberts rules, you don't need a second for a nomination.
For this particular thing?
No, you don't.
Movements, you need a second.
You, right, for a nomination, you do not. I need a second.
So we'll do a?
You're going to have to do it this.
We'll do a roll call vote, and name three.
Yeah, just like.
Name three.
Just like you did, just like you did with the Pita, with, uh, alcohol, whichever board you did.
Yeah. Pita Boa. Pita Boa. Ready? Councilman Rosenbaum.
Could you give all four names again, Purz, please?
So it's, it's? So it's.
No, but.
It's Randy, Mike.
Adam and Justin.
Adam and Justin.
Okay.
Randy, myself, Adam.
Justin. Councilman Novak.
Randy, Mike, and Adam.
Councilman. Karanka. Myself. Justin, Mike. Councilman Cunningham.
Karanka, Rosenbaum, and Novak.
Councilman Yagowski.
Novak, Karanka, and Rosenbaum.
Councilman Keel.
Myself, Councilman Rosenbaum, Councilman Novak.
And finally, um. Councilman Mullenauer.
Randy, Novak, Adam, Karanka, Mike, Rosenbaum.
We have. Four. We have Mr. Novak, we have Mr. Rosenbaum, and we have Mr. Karanka as the winners. One, two, three, four, five, six. Novak, it looks like. Six. Rosenbaum.
Seven.
Seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, Rosenbaum, thank you. And one, two, three, four, five, six, Karanka.
Thank you.
Give us that tally again, please.
Six, seven, six, two. Mr. Cunningham, it was six, seven.
Seven.
Six.
Six.
And two.
Put this in.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is the Solid Waste District Board, that's currently held by Mr. Mullenauer.
Mr. Mullenauer, if you'd like to stay on, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, I would. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Karanka. Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is NERC, Justin currently sits on that and does a great job.
Motion to approve of Mr. Keel to the NERC Board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum for Justin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is the Mileage Rate for the 2024 IRS Mileage, for 2024 has increased to sixty-seven cents a mile, the state of Indiana, as of July 2023, remains at forty-nine cents a mile.
If, if I'm correct, our, in 2023, we were at fifty-five cents? I believe it was the reimbursement rate. I'm gonna, regardless, I'm gonna make a motion for sixty cents, for a rate of sixty cents per mile.
I'm second now.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Karanka for sixty cents.
What was it last year?
He thought it was fifty, I thought it was fifty-five, honestly.
If I split the difference right now, it's.
Well, we're a little heavier, so that we're not doing pennies.
Correct.
Around to the nearest five.
What's for me?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Uh, next item is Liaison Assignments, so if there's something that you don't want to be on that you're on this year, um, let me know, if you don't want to be on it, we'll assume that everybody wants to stay where they're. Where they're at, and we'll, we'll deal with it next month, with the, the next meeting.
Okay, I, I, I know that I'm duplicated with, um, Mr. Cunningham on the Corrections and Juvenile Service Center, and I don't believe that there's a need for duplication there, so I would remove my second on that one.
So we'll have that, that be on our.
I'll, I'll send you an email.
Be on our next agenda, on the twenty-second. Discussion on the, uh, NERC Resolution of Support.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll, I'll give a background of it, and we, we also have, uh, NERC's Executive Director, Ty Warner, on the Zoom with us this evening. For a little bit of background, NERC receives its funding, local funding, from a process set in statute that determines that each county must contribute an amount of money equal to the population, so it's a per capita rate. It only goes up with the increase of population, which hasn't been the case in, for quite some time. Um, also, this is a fixed dollar amount that is not indexed for inflation, so since nineteen ninety-two, I want to say, Mr. Warner, does that sound correct?
Correct, nineteen ninety-two.
It has not gone up, as a result, the purchasing power of NERC's, uh, local funding has considerably decreased in that time period. And, uh, the NERC Executive Board and Full Commission have been, for quite some time now, trying to get the General Assembly to increase that appropriation, which would require the counties to pay more money each year to NERC in order to fund its operations. As a reminder, there are many millions of dollars that flow to us through our, being in this MPO and participating in it, and we're able to leverage additional federal funds by us contributing more. What this resolution, or, or the discussion of a resolution is, is asking for, is for us to, uh, signal to the General Assembly that we are supportive of them increasing that appropriation requirement and indexing it in the future, so it floats with inflation. I, I can say firsthand, having been involved with NERC, uh, originally appointed through the town of La Crosse and, and now through the county, um, I can say that there is a, there's a funding issue, they need to have more local funding. It's completely unreasonable for anyone to expect a government entity to be able to run its operations without an increase in funding for, for like thirty years, that's just not how anything works. We give raises to staff, just as NERC would like to, and it is difficult to do those things when there isn't more money coming from our local counties. My inclination is that the other two counties, Porter and Lake, are supportive of this, um, and are going to be doing similar resolutions. Uh, Mr. Warner, have I missed anything that you'd like to touch on in that?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Keel, the, the only things that I would add are just to emphasize that NERC is not asking for an increase than.
Turn it up.
The legislature had adopted in nineteen ninety-two, it's just trying to right-size and adjust for inflation that same amount from nineteen ninety-two, so it's not going above that proportional amount. And the thing I would iterate is that there is a multiplier effect with this amount, we receive, just like with any federal share, it's typically a twenty-eighty split. Same thing happens for our operations and what we're able to receive for service to the region, it's multiplied by, you know, to our twenty percent matching eighty percent, so there's a four-hundred percent increase of what we're able to obtain in federal funds from the amount that comes to NERC. So it's not just straight funds, it's a, it's a multiplier for, for federal funds. So, um, we appreciate your consideration of this, the, the seventy cents per capita rate that was put in ninety-two is worth thirty-two cents today. So that's continually, uh, dropped, so we're able to do less and less with less and less funds that we have, so. Again, it's not, uh, it's not any kind of expansion or anything like that, it's, it's trying to right-size the amount that the legislature granted in nineteen ninety-two.
Thank you, I just want to add that, uh, having talked with Ty, that, um, NERC has returned to La Porte County in hundreds of millions of dollars, so I mean, the return that we're getting back is astronomical, and it, and it's making it possible for us to do a lot of projects here, so.
Yeah, NERC programs, one point four billion dollars over the course of a four-year period in federal funds that come into this region, which is quite a lot of money, so it's definitely a bang for our buck.
So do we have a motion of support?
I would make a motion of support for this.
Second.
Motion by.
Anybody, it doesn't matter.
Who's the name? Motion by, motion by Justin, Mr. Keel, and seconded by pretty much everybody, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Warner.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the council's support, thank you, and we look forward to continuing to serve you and getting as much money for you as we possibly can.
We appreciate it. Next item is the seventeen eighty-two discussion.
Mr. President, if you'd like, I can give some background on that.
Would you please?
Uh, on Thursday, we received an updated seventeen eighty-two notice from the Department of Local Government Finance. Uh, as a little reminder, how the process works is, uh, after we submit our budget, they review it for statutory conformity, uh, we then responded to that last, uh, well, like, two weeks ago roughly, or we're in that time range. Uh, they then review our response to them, they, again, ensure statutory conformity and send it back to us. There was one oversight, which was that, um, the fund, the revenue that comes in from excise, C-Vet, and FIT, I believe were the three, are tied to the percentage, um, of, uh, levy revenue that gets distributed to the different funds. And so as a result, when we shifted the one point six million from general, that levy, over to the, um, health fund, it caused some of the C-Vet, um, excise and FIT, uh, revenue as well to get shifted over. And so that created then a shortage in the general fund of about, off the top of my head, ninety-seven thousand?
Two fifty-five.
Yep. So, um, what we can do tonight, they've asked that if we're going to respond to that and come up with something, um, and identify additional revenue, that we do that tonight and, uh, send it to them before noon tomorrow, that would prevent us from needing to make cuts of that ninety-seven thousand amount. Uh, fortunately, now that the year is over, we can see that certain funds brought in more, or certain accounts within the general fund brought in more revenue than we had previously anticipated, one of those was the Juvenile Services Center, when we did our budget back in twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-three, we were basing it off of, uh, their revenue from the state having not increased.
Prior to an increase.
Yeah, prior to their increase, and so they collected more revenue than we anticipated, uh, last year, and as such, there is additional funding that we can point to that would lead to them believing as part of this budget process that we have a higher starting cash balance.
How much would you like to correct it by?
Uh, the amount that they said they would be cutting, um, so.
We don't want to round that up just a little bit, in case there's a.
I would say, let's give the Auditor's Office a little bit of discretion to round as necessary there, if they need to make a little bit of wiggle room as they prepare it, um, I would say that would be good, probably shouldn't be exactly zero.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
We don't know what a little bit is, but.
Hundred thousand. Well, a hundred thousand dollars would be.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it would be safe to, to, to round and say a hundred thousand dollars of, of additional juvenile services revenue.
Motion by Mr. Keel?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there any other discussions?
Get a question, so, um, I don't, I don't disagree with the statement was made, the problem is, we missed some revenue again, and this isn't the first time. So we missed the revenue of the example with the, um, uh, Highway Department, with the rev, their extra revenue bought in by the sale. Uh, I also have been bringing up for numerous times, I still have not seen, and have asked for, for the revenue from the, from the, uh, tax sale, because that was also in the year of twenty twenty-three. And what did we get in our general account for that, so I think a lot of these numbers are missed, and that's why I was surprised that we missed their number by that much, because we have a lot of revenue coming that we don't necessarily always.
To clarify the, uh, the additional Highway Department revenue, at the time that the budget was prepared, that sale had not occurred, so we didn't know that we received that as part of it.
But we found out after that.
Yes, but, and there wouldn't have been a time prior to the, responding to the seventeen eighty-two to do that, so we prepare our budget, we advertise it, and at that time.
But we've been prepared for it, because the sale was listed for a long time, and the same thing with, the same thing with the, uh, with the, um, uh, tax sale. So, again.
Until we know the revenue, it can't be baked into the budget process, um.
I understand that, but you're prepared to go with, if you have a, a government agent who's going to pick on things that are only after the fact, then you better prepare to have those little stars, now we have money coming in for these and that, we, those, they happen every year.
May, may I ask a question, Mr. Yagowski, are you, uh, suggesting that we also add that revenue as another source that we hadn't put in before, uh, from those sale, and that we therefore say to, uh, the state that we have even more revenues than.
Yeah, that makes, what makes for stating our, our revenue, we have, correct, yes.
So, and, and I'm just gonna try and translate from what I, the point that I brought up, that not to mention just the Juvenile Service Center, but that we also had, um, the sale at the, um.
We added the sale.
We, we added.
Added it after.
I thought we did in the seventeen eighty-two.
We added it and for the last, when we, in December eleventh, right?
I'm agreeing.
We put it in December.
But if they're on our, if they're out there going, hey, we're going to increase you because you didn't cut, you don't have enough money, we're saying, no, look at our stars right here, metallics, you want to say, that we have money, revenue coming in.
I forgot.
That way, we don't have to sit there and play stupid games with the state on this, and I believe this is a stupid game by the state.
I believe the seventeen eighty-two was sent in after the sale, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, because the seventeen eighty-two wasn't sent in that long ago, and the sale was in the, the fall, but, but anyway.
Why to the seventeen eighty-two notice was after the sale?
The initial seventeen eighty-two, we didn't approve the budget until later in the year, so.
Just trying to find it.
The revenue would have been done by SEH.
You know what?
Okay.
Earlier, I believe.
We're just going to work closer to make sure we get all this stuff.
One of the things is, we don't know, when we prepare a budget, or when the Auditor's Office starts preparing it back in July, they're looking at, as part of the budget process, we estimate miscellaneous revenues, non-property tax revenues, we also estimate that too, but we estimate non-property tax revenues, so this big bucket of miscellaneous revenue. We don't always know how much we're going to bring in, it's a guess, and we take a guess at how much additional miscellaneous revenue we're going to bring in for the second half of the year that we're doing the budget in, so in the case for the twenty twenty-four budget, we're estimating how much additional revenue, miscellaneous revenue is going to come in in twenty twenty-three, and that helps us prepare an estimated starting cash balance for twenty twenty-four. It's imperfect by nature, because we're estimating, and so when we receive more revenue than we originally programmed, or when things change, that number wouldn't reflect that, because we're just using estimates. So the, the process is, it's imperfect, um, but it wouldn't be an issue if we had a larger, um, cash balance, and that's the reason that we're in this, is because we're, we're so down to the wire, that that's why they're making these cuts, there's, there's no, no savings left in the general fund.
There's no cushion.
No cushion.
Okay.
Otherwise, we would never notice this whole thing.
We, we'd have to verify, as far as the tax goes, we'd have to go back to the numbers that SEH did, and see if, when he calculated revenues, if he ballparked a figure for other tax, so based on what previous tax sales were, I don't have a ready answer for you, it's not a, it's, it's a good question.
Yeah, because there generally is, it's a, it's somewhat of a, a set fee that comes across, especially, especially with that, because your first tax sales are just going to be your hundred, you're, you're, you're going to make the small amounts, the one hundred, three hundred, five hundred, you know, those type things. But as the, as the bidding one for the Commissioners, those are the ones that go as high as they want, and they've been, numbers have gone out the roof here lately with, with outsiders investing in to La Porte County.
I believe the income from the tax sale is only, um, it, it doesn't get counted right away because of the, um.
Redemption.
Redemptions and the surplus and all of that, so.
Depends on the Commissioner's sale versus the.
Yes, I'm saying, there's two sales.
One, one doesn't have a redemption.
They both can be redeemed, one is just shorter than the other. So.
If I bid fifteen hundred dollars or three thousand dollars, and Mr. Cunningham is short, my three thousand goes here, we have, the number's still going to be a set number, it can go up higher, but it's, if, if we bring in a million dollars, you're still going to bring in a million dollars, it could be higher because, because the situation's going on.
When there's.
You're all, but, just real quick, all you're doing is satisfying the judgment on a Commissioner's sale, so my Commissioner's sale, I paid the fifteen hundred dollars that Mr. Cunningham didn't, he's allowed to come back at any time, you're still got your revenue.
We didn't have a Commissioner's sale last year, first of all, but second of all, it's still, the surplus is able to be.
Agreed, agreed, but I, I used both comparisons, but we did the year before, and we didn't get credit for it.
Okay.
That's why I brought it up, that's when you guys didn't know, that's where everybody didn't realize how much money was brought in, because as I actually go to these sales, and we had no idea, because we didn't have that money listed down there in the past. Anyway.
Any other comments on the seventeen eighty-two? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. County Council Attorney comments?
Make a motion to adjourn if there are no comments.
Motion and a second?
I got a comment.
What?
Oh, wait, wait, we have a comment.
Aren't we going to go through the council's comments, or no?
Sure, we, we started, I would nobody say anything, so we'll back up.
I just wanted to congratulate yourself, Randy.
Thank you.
And, uh, Adam on, uh, President, Vice President, and also commend Mike Rosenbaum for a job well done last year, had a, had a lot on his plate, and I think he did a commendable job, and just thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I don't think we talked, did we get a chance to have one in silence for Steve Winsky who passed away?
No. I, I.
Did that in a regular.
I thought we did that at, uh, the December eleventh, so. We did it December eleventh, yes, because he, he, he was buried the day before, so we did it that night.
That's good, thank you.
Yep, no, we.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Now the motion torture.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cut, uh.
Yagowski.
Yagowski, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?